I'd like to call this meeting to order. A meeting of the Village Board on Monday, April 19th at 7:00 PM here in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form. And action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present except for Trustees Abel and Trustee Wing who are absent and excused. We'd also like to welcome our newest elected Village Board trustees with Trustee Miller and Trustee Ny Rider both in the audience tonight but will be sitting with us at the next Village Board meeting on the dais with the rest of the trustees and Village President. So, welcome and congratulations to you both. Next item is, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, patient under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is President's Report. Not much to report tonight. I do want to mention though that the MI-Fest, even though it is canceled as far as an official event, they will be having it. The Deutschsted Heritage Foundation will be providing a MI-Fest celebration in a box and there'll be a drive-through pickup that will be available on May 15th here at the Village Hall parking lot from noon till 6:00 PM. Trustee Miller, is there a place where they can go and sign up for that or?
Let's start here.
And I'm taking away their thunder here. If you could come up to the front, that would be wonderful.
The, the, uh, MI-Fest is in, there will be food and beverage in a box and it's, I think it's from 1:00 to 4:00 now. It's been shortened time, but the object is to keep it in people's minds that we're still around and as soon as we can get back together, we can have the, have a regular festival again. In the meantime, we'll use this money that is made and for the donations that the, that we do throughout the village throughout the year.
Do people have to sign up ahead of time to get a box or are you just gonna have a bunch made up and then pick them up until they're gone?
They, there is a sign up box, I mean, sign up on the computer, but if you just happen to, just driving by, they'll still be able to pick up some boxes.
All right, great. Thank you, Pastor President Hargan, I appreciate it. Trustee Myers.
Yes, there's gonna be the, high school is going to have some bands there, I mean, some music there. Mr. Barnes has volunteered to have some, some band, some band members there and we'll donate the money, some money for the, instead of paying them, we will donate that to the Park and Rec Commission.
All right, great. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Marcy Stone. I am also a member of the Deutschsted Heritage Foundation. We do encourage advanced purchase of the boxes. Yes, we will have some that day, but it'll be a limited number that will be available that day that have not been purchased in advance. So, it is our only fundraiser of the year. We do support a lot of local events. So, the money, we obviously did not have an event last year and not having a three-day event this year has really hurt our funds and is hurting our ability to give to the, the Park and Rec Department and the Kiwanis Club for the Christmas Parade and the Fourth of July Parade and the Breakfast with Santa and the K-9 Unit and the Veterans. So, I mean, we do a lot of different things, scholarships, and so we just don't have the funds to do those things right now. So, we're hoping to do this. So, I want to just let everyone know our website, which is MI-FestGermantown.org. That's M-A-I-F-E-S-T-Germantown.org. Please go and purchase a box in advance of the May 15th, May 15th event. Thank you.
Great, thank you for all the information. That takes care of President's Report, so we can go on to the next item, which is appointments.
Motion to approve, Rowan Newble, Number 5, has presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve appointments from Item A through Item E. Any discussion on that motion to approve? Trustee Myers.
I believe it was on Item 12. If they could have a correction on my last name, I appreciate that. Thank you.
My mistake. Any other discussion? And just for the public's notice, we will be making appointment recommendations and approving for general government and finance, public safety, public works, commissions and boards, which are administrative appeals, review board, border review, board of zoning appeals, building construction oversight committee, economic development committee, ethics board, historic preservation commission, library board, park and recreation commission, plan commission, police and fire commission, senior center advisory committee, utility advisory committee, tourism commission, weed commissioner, mid-moraine legislative committee, and the official posting places, which are the Village Hall, the public library, and the village website. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the appointments as listed? There's no discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee and department reports. And we'll start with committee chairs and reports, and we'll start with Trustee Miller.
Uh, I guess I'll report on public safety, although I'm leaving that, but public safety meeting, next meeting will be Monday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM.
And you're all right with that? The new chair of public safety, Trustee Myers?
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you. GGF, Trustee Miller.
GGF will meet May 17th, Monday, May 17th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Trustee Kaminsky.
Public Works will meet in this room on May 5th at 6:00 PM. It's a Wednesday this time. We're going onto our summer schedule.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports they'd like to add? All right, then we'll go on to the next item, which is citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone in the audience or with us via WebEx that would like to come forward for citizen input or public appearance, you're welcome to do so at this time. If you're within our audience, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you have joined us via WebEx, please make yourself known so that the person that is monitoring that can present and bring you forward if you wish to comment. Is there anyone wishing to comment for citizen input or public appearance? All right, then we can go on to the next item, which is consent agenda.
Take a motion to approve consent, uh, consent agenda, Items A through H as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve consent agenda, Items A through H. If there are any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? We'll do roll call, vote please.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper. President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There's no unfinished business and as mentioned before, no public hearing, so that then takes us to new business, starting with new business, Item A, appointment of Peter Later as Highway Parks Business and Grounds Foreman. This is a recommendation coming forward from me to choose Peter as the grounds foreman. Scott Anderson has highly recommended him as well in regards to his knowledge and history of the Public Works Department. He brings a lot of, a lot of good work ethic, a lot of good work history with him. He has a great knowledge base for the Public Works Department, so for that, we are recommending him as the grounds foreman.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? No discussion? You wanna see who he is? Would you mind standing up, sir?
I worked with him before.
There is a man that is being recommended as grounds foreman.
Congratulations, Pete.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming. Next item under new business is Item B, temporary extension of premise for Sticks Golf located at West 164, North 11271 Squire Drive in Germantown for the June 6th, 2021, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Stars and Stripes Honor Flight Inc., Honor Flight Memorial Virtual Golf Fundraiser.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry, Mr. Hudson. Trustee Hudson.
Have the neighboring businesses been notified of the, how that parking lot's gonna work and how it's gonna be closed off and how they're gonna route traffic through there?
Yes.
They were sent a letter. Now, it did not include the map on it, but it did make reference of the meetings.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item under new business is Item C, temporary Class B license for the Deutschsted Heritage Foundation, MI-Fest celebration in a box for the drive-through pickup at Village Hall Parking Lot at North 112, West 1, that's not right, 17001, Mecklenburg Road on May 15th from noon to 6:00 PM.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Right. 107.
Yep. The address is incorrect. Any further discussion? Trustee Baum.
How are we doing drive-through alcohol pickup? Beer pickup? Is that allowed by law?
Village attorney.
Is that allowed or?
There is. I have a full statement.
In essence, the, the state just changed the law such that with Class B licenses, they have the ability to sell items outside of their original container for consumption off-site, provided that it is sold in a tamper-proof container. So, that, you know, if they were to get pulled over, for example, and, you know, the officer saw, you know, alcohol sitting in the, in the back, you know, you could tell if it was opened or not, that type of thing. They've always been able to sell items in their original containers, which it sounds like this may actually be what is gonna happen, that they're, they actually are gonna have original containers of alcohol.
So, just for clarification, I'm getting nods from the audience. I buy a bottle of beer, it's a bottle of beer still sealed? That's the way you're selling it? Okay. All right. Police chief, do you have any problems with this? No? Okay.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Last item under new business is from our village attorney, Brian Sadak. He's got a presentation on open meetings. But he needs to hook up. Oh, he's got it.
All right. So, wanted to get together with everybody to just kinda go through some of the guidelines for Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, and we're gonna touch a little bit on, on public records too right at the end. Gonna try to whip through this fairly quickly. Primary reason for that is, I think, you know, obviously, a lot of you have some experience. This is really kind of designed more for the newer folks on the board, but hopefully maybe some of the old timers will learn something. Trustee Baum, you were the only one who came to our training last time, as I recall, so this is gonna look all very familiar, so. Last training was what? Two years ago, three years ago? Yeah, something like that, so. Yeah. So, this will be some training for you. The only thing that I will add to what we're gonna do here with what we're doing is, number one, feel free to jump in if you have any questions. Happy to be interrupted and to answer the questions. That's the best way to address them, I find. If you find that after we're done and you have questions, all of you guys know how to reach me, you folks will know how to reach me soon, and feel free to reach out and happy to, to answer questions where I can. So, we're gonna start, as I said, with Open Meetings Law, just to talk a little bit about that. The statute does a pretty good job for us of defining what the public policy behind the Open Meetings Law is. In short, what the statute says is that because we like to have an informed electorate, access to the fullest and most complete information regarding the affairs of government is of the utmost importance. And so, it's with that framework that we then move on to the rest of the statute, which talks about, and this is kind of the, the meat and potatoes for our purposes, that all meetings of local governmental bodies are held in publicly, in public places that are reasonably accessible to members of the public. Reasonable, accessible, we're gonna talk a little bit about here in a little bit, but the general idea is, is that the government's business should be conducted in open, is what that means. Lastly, you see there at the bottom that the statute is what they call liberally construed, which just means that if the court ever has to look at whether or not there is a violation, the chances are they will probably find one, because that's what liberally construed means, that they're gonna try to figure out a way to, to give intent to the language the best they can. As it relates to open meetings themselves, the statute defines a meeting or defines our requirements, quite simply as saying that every meeting of a governmental body shall be preceded by public notice and shall be held in open session. So, you see, we've got a couple words that are highlighted in red, which is our signal that we're, those are the, the kind of key terms in what we're gonna talk about moving forward. So, number one, oh, go ahead, Trustee Myers.
Do you need me to go back?
I may be ahead of time, but was there something that was just changed in regard on the public notice where they had to actually be and what they were in the past, or didn't that?
In, in short, yes. It didn't really change anything for us. It was designed for other municipal entities. Some of the lower-class cities, for example, that changed their requirements. For the village, it actually didn't change much for us, so.
Thank you.
So, number one, let's just talk briefly about what is a governmental body. Obviously, I think all of you understand that you sit here as a member of a governmental body, and if you sit here as a member of the planning commission or public safety committee or any of the boards and commissions that the government has itself, you probably understand that that's a governmental body. I only highlight this really because a lot of times you folks end up on other bodies, whether it's something up at the county or if you are, you know, part of, you know, some sort of, you know, nonprofit organization that has, you know, some body that gets involved, that I highlight this just to kinda give you a heads up that there are other things other than just here that you may be responsible for these rules for. In short, what the statute says is that it's either a governmental body, which obviously we all understand, things that we think of, or what they call quasi-governmental entities. So, quasi-governmental entities, the kind of best examples I can give you are things like the Bradley Center Sport and Entertainment Corporation, which now doesn't exist, but that was in existence when I created the slide. You know, certainly the Miller Park Stadium District would be another one, MMSD, Sewer Pack, those types of bodies are what they call quasi-governmental. They don't, they're not technically governments, but they look and sound a lot like government, and so that's how they decide whether it is or not. We've got some case law. Case law basically tells us that if, when trying to figure out if it is a quasi-governmental organization, what the cases tell us is, is that if it's based on the totality of the circumstances, if it looks like a government in function, effect, and status, then it is a quasi-governmental organization. Seems kind of straightforward and obvious, and again, I just highlight it just to make you aware of the fact that you may have requirements outside of this building as well. So, going back, we remember we had our red words. One of the other red words that was highlighted is meeting. So, the question is, what constitutes a meeting? This, I think, if you take nothing else away from this evening, this is where you wanna probably pay the most attention. A meeting for the purposes of Open Meetings Law is a convening of the members of a body for the purpose of exercising the responsibilities, authority, power, or duties delegated or vested in that body. Statute goes on to say that if one half or more of the members of the governmental body are present, the meeting is presumed to be for the purposes of exercising the responsibilities. The term does not include any social or chance gathering or conference, which is not intended to avoid the subchapter. So, a whole lot to break down as part of that discussion. So, if we go back to the first piece, convening of members for the purposes of exercising their authority, probably fairly obvious in most cases. You're taking a vote on some action that the body is going to, to take, clearly an exercise of the governmental's power. However, there are other things that are included in this. The most kind of obvious or, or not as obvious situation is just the gathering of information. So, for example, you may go sit, you know, at, at the plan commission because there's some controversial development that's coming forward. If you go to that meeting for the sole purposes of gathering information to help you make your decision down the road, then you are exercising that responsibility by gathering that information. So, it's not just where we're going to be taking votes, but it is anything that involves kind of your authority and your responsibilities as a trustee. Second piece, I think, is a little bit more obvious and self-evident. If one half of the members are there, it's gonna be presumed to be a meeting. So, if you have, for example, this body where you have nine members and you have at least five of those members in the same place at the same time, what the statute tells us is, is that that is going to be presumed to be a meeting. Yes, ma'am? Well, so the, the question for that, I don't know if there's anybody even online, but just in case there is anybody online, the, the question is, what happens if you are all together at the same time, but you're not actually talking about business? So, the answer to that is, of course, you see that it, it can, it is a presumption that can be rebutted, rebutted. So, you can present evidence that says, no, we were not exercising our, our authority, and, you know, here's how we, we do that. Now, the trick is, of course, it's very hard to prove a negative, right? You know, how do you establish that you weren't talking about something? And so... I'm, I'm not, well, cer- certainly there are municipal attorneys that will tell you that. I personally don't ever go that far, mostly because I know that there are communities that do hang out socially. That really is that last part of the sentence, oops, clicked it too many times. The, the last part of the statute where it says, "The term does not include a social or chance gathering or conference, which is intended to avoid the subchapter." And so, if, you know, if we all had kids that were on the same soccer team, for example, and you went to the same soccer tournament, it's a chance or social gathering, just like if you go out to the bar afterwards and you're just hanging out, you know, that's a social gathering. It probably doesn't count. The only thing I will caution you, and what I caution all of my bodies about, is you need to be very careful, because you do not know who's sitting in the chair next to you. And we have had circumstances where the person in the chair next to you happens to be some applicant that's had something on the next agenda, and lo and behold, they were talking about it, and, you know, you end up getting yourself in trouble because you don't know. Or you're sitting there talking and it's the, you know, Tom Dakin from the Journal who, you know, "Oh, there's a new development, tell me more." You know, that kinda stuff. So, you just need to be very careful with it, is the, the caution that I have. Certainly, you know, as I say, you're better off if you just don't, but I understand that lots of communities do, and so I just urge you to be cautious. Right. If it is less than one half, then there is no presumption that is, it is a meeting. We're gonna talk a little bit about whether or not it's still a, potentially a meeting in a second here, but it's not presumed to be. So, if, if you only had four of you together, for example, the statute and the courts aren't gonna say, ah, that is a meeting unless you can prove otherwise. They're just gonna say, okay, tell me more. Make sense?
But we have to be careful too, because of our committees, our standing committees. So, Phil and I, and we're in a meeting and somebody else from our committee walked in, we're basically in a meeting.
Yep. And you're, you're stealing my thunder here in a second, but that's all right. Trustee Meyer.
Are you saying that the burden of proof is on the people who met, the people who are accusing you of?
If, if there are more than one half of the body, the burden of proof shifts to the body itself to establish that they were not meeting. Yes, that's where it talks about the rebuttable presumption language in the statute. That is what that means, that you have the ability to establish that we were not meeting. If it is less than one half of the members, then it is on the, the, the burden falls to the person who is alleging that there is a violation taking place.
So, then five people would have to say, no, we did not do as you are accusing us. That's all that's need to be done?
I mean, that's the theory, yes. As I say, it's, it's hard to prove a negative a lot of times, so, you know, how you establish that you weren't talking about business becomes the question. Really, your answer is, is that the five of you are going to, you know, swear an affidavit that says, "We were not talking business," and it'll be up to the court to decide whether or not they believe you or not. I mean, that's really the only way you can prove it.
Not circumstantial evidence.
Right.
But whatever.
Thank you.
There are community functions, like scholarship fund banquet, like MI-Fest, opening ceremony, in which Deanna will put out a posting, a public notice that there is by chance a possibility of, of members of the Village Board being present. Does that then constitute a public notice of a meeting, or is it just FYI?
So, the reason we do those is to cover the bases of, of kind of what we're do- of, of this rule, in fact, that by putting out that notice that says, hey, we may have a majority of whatever body, Village Board, Plan Commission, whatever, they may be present at this particular social event. What that does is, number one, it, if there was a determination that that is in fact a meeting, because you guys were talking about business, we at least eliminate one of the violations from the statute that we provide. that we provided notice that you guys were going to be there and, and, and potentially, you know, there. The other thing that it does is that it helps establish for not only the members of the body, when they see that as the reminder, oh yeah, let's not talk about business, but it establishes for a reviewing body, whether it's the district attorney or the attorney general's office, who are the two offices that, you know, enforce this code. That it, you know, we can look at them and say, look, we are, we are aware of the fact that this was going to be a social gathering. We highlighted it nonetheless, just to make sure that the public was fully aware of what was going on and where folks were going to be. We don't expect our members to, you know, conduct business while they're there, but we're just highlighting for the public that they're going to be there just to cover our bases. So it, it helps us with the argument if we, if there was ever a violation. So kind of the easiest way to break all of this down is there was a case back in 87, which was the showers case. The showers case basically establishes a two-part test for us. First part is there must be a purpose to engage in governmental business, discussion, decision, information gathering, whatever the case may be. And then the second is that there must be sufficient numbers for the, to determine the parent body's course of action. Which then takes us to the question of quorum. Now there's this little chart here on the side, none of you are going to be able to read it because it's very small. I'm going to update the chart that I have, the one in here is actually, it's actually a Mequon chart as I look, look at it, but we will be updating that and then circulating it. In short, what that chart has is it's got the name of the particular body. So we'll do one that'll have the village board, the various committees, the plan commission, tourism, you know, all of the bodies of the, of the village. It'll identify the number of voting members. It'll identify what the quorum for that body is. And then there's going to be two additional columns on the far right-hand side. There's going to be a maximum number and a minimum number. So before we get into the maximum, minimum, quorum, I think most of you understand is just the number or the minimum number of members that are necessary in order to take action at a meeting. And so typically that is going to be 50% plus one of the total membership. So for example, if you had a seven member body, a quorum would be three because you can't, you, you go to seven, half seven is three and a half. You can't have half a person, so you round up, so if quorum is four, you need four people of that body in order to conduct business. Now, the minimum and maximum numbers that are there then go to address a concept that we call a negative quorum. Negative quorum in short is the number of members of a body that are necessary to block action of the parent body. And so that's where that minimum and maximum number come in. In short, what takes place when you're doing the analysis is depending on kind of the old school version or the way that I think it should be done, you take your total membership and you figure out, okay, if you've got seven members, then you know that you're going to need four votes in order to take action on anything. And so with that, the same for, you know, could potentially block action. And so it's, it ends up kind of being the same number. The kind of newer way of analyzing it is, is that you base it on the actual potential membership at a meeting. And so what that would mean is, is that if you are in a circumstance where you have seven member body, your quorum is four, you can meet with four. If you have only four people meeting, then you can block action with two because a two-to-two vote on an affirmative motion fails. And so you can't take the action that was there. And so two would be the kind of true negative quorum, at, at least in, in my opinion. And so when you look at the chart, there's the maximum number and the minimum number. The minimum number is the minimum number of people that could potentially meet without running afoul of the new way of looking at it. So the two in the case of the example on seven. The maximum number would be the maximum number that could meet without running afoul of the issue based on kind of the old school method. My recommendation is, is that you do not follow the old school method. And there's going to be a reason for that as we talk about here in one second. So if we go back to the showers case, showers case talks about the fact that one of the reasons we care about negative quorum is the, this idea that politics makes strange bedfellows. That just because you have certain members that are always opposed to each other, sometimes those members end up not being opposed to each other. And so knowing where and, and limiting those interactions outside of the meetings allows you to better follow what is taking place in government. Now, the reason I say we follow the new version instead of the old version is because in 2018, the Court of Appeals came out with this case out of Dane County. Dane County is an interesting county. They have, I think, I mean, for lots of reasons, but the, the reason that it is most interesting for our purposes here is that I think they have thirty-three members, thirty-six members, it's like thirty-some members on their county board. It is a huge county board. There was an issue in the case that the Court of Appeals held where it became necessary for them to determine whether or not a walking quorum existed. In other words, that, that they were worried about a bunch of communications that were going on behind the scenes between members. And what the court did in that case, instead of doing the analysis as the whether or not there was a problem with the quorum by saying, well, you've got thirty-six members and you take half of that and you know, that's your number. They actually did the analysis based on the number of people who actually voted on the particular item that was up for discussion and ultimate action. And there were, you know, fifteen members that were absent or something like that. And so the number then changed from what it potentially could have been. And so I think that this is a case that signals to us that the courts are going to be looking at what is, you know, what actually took place as opposed to some hypothetical that exists. Now, you know, does that mean, you know, the, the reason I keep the maximum number on there is, you know, there's certainly some argument to be had because in that case, in the Dane County case, there was knowledge that there were going to be members that weren't going to be present. And so, you know, certainly there can be an argument that is made that says, well, you know, even though they did the analysis based on what was actually there, it also was kind of an expected lower number than it was. And so, you know, if, you know, for example, this body, you know, is just going to have a regular member and we assumed everybody was going to be here because everybody typically is. You know, the fact that only four members showed up or five members showed up on a particular meeting wasn't an indication that we had any idea that was going to happen, unless of course, we did know. And so we shouldn't be punished because we communicated in a way that otherwise might have been okay if all of the members had been there. I think that it probably helps to look at the minimum number because it helps the kind of true nefarious actions that could potentially take place. And not that I think this, anybody on this body would do it, but certainly you could, under the right circumstances, say, hey, we're going to call a special meeting and we know that, you know, A, B and C aren't going to be there. And so everybody that's going to be there is going to be in favor of it. And so, you know, we're going to be in a good position and we're going to talk amongst ourselves beforehand. That's where you potentially really get yourself in trouble. And so I think you want to be mindful of those, those lower numbers. Now, what that means in practice.
Oh, maybe I'm taking.
Before, before I go there, we'll answer questions.
So what you're saying is that our body here can act on something with a minimum of five people, right?
Yep.
So that would take the number down to three than for a quorum. I mean, for a walking quorum, I'm sorry, a negative quorum.
Correct.
So that's the real number. You know, the new number, I guess, as you called it.
Right.
That's not a lot.
No, and remember, and this is, and this is actually where I was going and, and what trustee Kaminsky's point was. Remember that's based on the village board. If it's an issue that's going through public safety and two of you happen to be on public safety, you've now caused problems, at least as it relates to the public safety vote that took place. Maybe doesn't impact the village board, but it's still a violation of the open meetings law for which there could be potential issues that come down as a result of it. So it's, it's a tough, tough thing. I mean, the, the bottom line is, you know, just be, you know, it kind of goes back to what I said before. You just need to be very careful about what you're doing when you're out in public outside of, of an official meeting. Now, what happens if you get in the circumstance where, you know, you've got something that's coming to public safety and you really need to flesh it out a little bit before the committee meeting and you want to talk about it? Easy way to do it is we'll just notice it as a meeting and, okay, we're going to do it. And especially in today's age with Zoom and, and, and all these virtual meetings, if you want to do it virtually and, you know, talk about it before the meeting, we'll notice it up as a meeting, you guys can talk about it legally and there's no issues. And so that's the easy solution to all of it is to just, you know, provide the notice that we had a meeting. And so that's, that's, you know, something to keep in mind as you're, as you're looking at some of these things.
Yeah, one more question on that. But what about, is it just on future actionable items or anything that was voted on in the past?
So what the, what the statute contemplates is, is that you have a meeting for the purposes of exercising your authority. So if you already exercised your authority and there's no indication or knowledge that you're going to need to exercise your authority on that topic again in the future, then you can talk about it all you want because it's a past item and, you know, you don't need to worry about it.
But it could be on something, as an example, we voted on tonight and could come back for reconsideration. That's still an actionable item, potentially.
You, you effectively read my mind. Certainly if you acted on something tonight, you know, at the next meeting, there could be a motion to reconsider. And so, you know, I mean, you may want to be a little bit cautious with things that are in the past, but if you, you know, if you're talking about something that we, you know, dealt with a year and a half ago.
Right.
I mean, unless we know that it's coming back for some reason, there's, there's no need that, you know, I mean, you can talk about that all you want, so.
You said if you wanted to talk about it or flush it out before the actual meeting, you could have a Zoom meeting, but that would have to be publicly noticed and also allow public to participate, correct?
Correct.
Okay, otherwise it doesn't hit the criteria of a publicly held meeting and noticed.
Correct. I mean, the public has to have access. Participate is the, you know, I mean, that's a variable kind of, you know, threshold. Typically, you know, this body allows for pretty robust public participation in terms of citizen comment and, and those types of things. And so you probably would in that circumstance, you know, need to continue to provide that kind of robust process. You know, just out of fear of, of being dinged on some other issues, you know, some due process issue or something like that. You know, at least in terms of a, you know, an open meetings violation. If you just said, well, for this meeting, we're not going to allow public comments. You know, there's, there's no problem there from an open meetings perspective, but there may be some other issues that we'd have to worry.
Now that you said that, it makes me think of something else. So we've had a, a meeting that would be considered an informational meeting where we've invited the public in and we have members of this body here and we're talking to the public in regards to either the item that might be coming forward for this board to consider. And in some cases, the public is asking your opinion or what you feel about it. And there are other members of this body that are within earshot of that. How does that work?
Well, you'll notice that when we have those types of things, they're typically noticed as a more formal meeting. You generally, it's not just the chance social gathering type notice that's out there, but it, it generally does look a little bit more like a meeting agenda. It might not have the formal, you know, call the order and, you know, pledge of allegiance and, and, you know, all of the specifics. But we do highlight typically that, hey, the, you know, you know, village board is going to be there to, to talk and listen to folks about this particular topic. And so, you know, it is noticed as a, as a meeting where we're, that, you know, the, the purpose is to talk about that particular topic, so. All right. So kind of already touched on, on the next issue, which is the concept of a walking quorum. In short, for in particular, you new folks, a walking quorum is separate meetings of multiple groups, each less than a full quorum size, who agree through mutual representation, act and vote uniformly, you know, such that you are in essence, creating some sort of agreement as you move along through the process. And so it's a long way of saying what is very easily demonstrated. If I'm a trustee and I talk to trustee Myers and trustee Myers and I talk about a particular topic and hey, this is what I think, that's okay because I haven't violated any of the quorum requirements, even a negative quorum at that point. Likewise, I can then go to trustee Miller and say, hey, trustee Miller, here's my thought. This is what's going on, just wanted to let you know. And you can kind of go down the line and, and, and do that without any real problems as long as it's kind of between us. Where you run into problems under a walking quorum analysis is, is if I go to trustee Myers first and we talk, and then I go to trustee Miller and I say, hey, trustee Myers and I were just talking and here's what we think. This is what we're going to do, you should join us, right? So, you know, it's that coalescence of support, you know, even though I'm not directly talking to both of them at the same time, you know, it's the fact that I'm kind of leading them to that agreement that creates the problem. Yes, but I'm going to put a very big asterisk at the end of that, which is where I was, the next comment that I was just going to make, which is the problem with me saying that it's okay to say, you can go to trustee Myers and trustee Miller and trustee Baum and so on, is the fact that I don't know and I can't control what trustee Baum and trustee Miller do once they have that information. So if I go and I say boop, 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 and then they start talking amongst themselves that, oh yeah, and I, we also talked to, you know, to trustee Peiper and she said this, and so this is what we think. Now you've been looped into that walking quorum, even though you may not have intended it. And so you, you need to be very careful with it.
If I was going to trustee Miller and I had a topic coming up on the agenda, I say, well, you know,
Certainly, I mean.
Can I ask him in which way he would vote for that?
Certainly, I mean, that was in essence, the Dane County case that we talked about. That is the communications that were going on, was that.
Aren't you kind of predetermining the outcome then?
Well, and, and that's ultimately what the court said is that in that case, because even though the guy was going around and asking individuals, you know, hey, how are you going to vote to do the vote count? Because there wasn't any evidence that that was then being shared to create some sort of actionable decision, you know, moving forward, that it didn't create any problems. The other thing that they decided is, is that because of the numbers that were involved, it wasn't a quorum anyway. And so even if it was them, you know, coalescing some sort of support, it didn't reach numbers that were sufficiently high to create any problems. But the key really was the idea that it wasn't the, hey, how are you voting? Oh, that's good because trustee Baum's also voting that way. It was just, oh, hey, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, take the tea leaves or, you know, stick my finger in the air, whatever you want to call it. You know, for my own personal, personal, you know, you know, reasons to understand, you know, where, you know, where this is going. You know, but as long as you're not creating that level of support, that tacit agreement that the case law talks about, you know, that, that, you know, you're not really necessarily creating any problems. Now that said, I don't personally recommend that you ask, hey, how are you going to vote? Because again, you don't know what that information, how that information is then going to be utilized down the road. And so, you know, I, you know, I think the theory of tonight or the, the mantra tonight is you just need to be careful with this stuff is, is what it boils down to.
I keep coming up with is the 2050 plan. People are talking about that everywhere. Even the trustees are talking about. Even the trustees are talking about it. Is it wrong to talk about that? Because we're going to make a decision on it at some point, but we're in the process of getting all, gathering information.
Well, I, I mean, again, you're, you know, you do the analysis based on what it is. So there is nothing wrong with you as a trustee, talking in public to any member of the public about the 50 50 plan or the 20 50 plan rather. Um, you know, I mean, that's, there's no problems there because you're not, you know, other than you, you're not part of the, the body. And likewise, there isn't necessarily anything wrong with, you know, some trustee, other trustee telling you, you know, hey, you know, I, I think, you know, up by Holy Hill, we really need more single family homes or whatever. Um, you know, because that's just, you know, merely a statement that's being made that's out there. Where you run into problems is where you start combining those statements into, oh, well, you know, trustee Miller thinks we need this and so does trustee, you know, so why don't we agree that that's what's going to be up there? The, the decision of what's going to be up there as part of the plan is what needs to take place at a meeting publicly in, in terms of what's going on. Makes sense? Um, so, uh, you know, in essence, we just said this, but the, the kind of essential feature is that element of, of agreement among the other members. Um, and, uh, that's really the, the key to the walking quorum analysis. So real quick note about electronic communications. Um, you know, it's kind of an interesting concept because what the case law tells us is that there is actually absolutely nothing wrong if trustee Myers sat down, wrote out by hand or typed up a letter, popped it in the US mail that went to every one of the trustees that said, hey, this is exactly how I'm going to vote and there's no problems and, uh, you know, I think you just needed to know that. And so you can do that. The problem with written communications, uh, in an electronic form is that you may end up accidentally convening sufficient members of a body. And what that means is that electronic communication sometimes looks more like what happens here during a discussion or a debate where you send the email and then you get the email back from two or three people and then you send the email out and there's back and forth. And that looks a lot like what takes place at a meeting. And so what the courts are likely to say is, is that that is in fact a meeting. And if you have enough people on that communication, you're going to run into problems. So that's one of the reasons why you'll see me, at least when I send out something to the full body, I'll remind you guys, hey, don't reply all of this because you're going to run into issues. And remember when I send that, I'm not protecting me because I'm not a member of the body. So I don't get the call from the DA that says, hey, you violated the law. Let's talk. They're going to come to you and say, hey, you violated the law. Let's talk. And so me putting on there is just there to protect you folks from doing that. And you'll see that I've, I've done that occasionally too, where somebody else has sent something that either I was copied on or that I find out about, that I then send out the email and say, hey, guys, just remember, keep it, you know, don't, don't do back and forth because that's where you're going to get yourself in trouble.
Is it better to send it a blind copy mail to everyone then? Is that, is that okay?
I, I'm, I'm personally torn on that concept. I know lots of, of my colleagues say that, that that's a good way of doing it because it helps, it, it helps prevent the reply all, you know, because you can't reply all. And so it's, it kind of reduces that, that harm. I don't necessarily like it because it also doesn't help. While if, if, if I'm looking at it from your email, I can see who you sent it from. On the other hand, if it gets out and it gets forwarded and, you know, it's going all over the place, I can't see what your original intent was without seeing your original message to see who it was all sent to. And so I personally, and you'll see that I do that when I send out things to the group. I just send it to everybody with a, you know, regular address because that then establishes that, look, I'm aware of the fact that I knew I was sending this to everybody. Everybody else can see that I was sending this to everybody and I told you guys, don't reply all because you're going to create potential issues.
So you could, you could potentially create a walking quorum with a blind copy.
Right.
Well, okay.
Uh, yes, in short, you can, um, you know, because there's no back and forth type of discussion. But again, you need to be careful with that because you send it out thinking, oh, I'm just going to send this out and I think everybody needs to know. And then, you know, trustee Baum says, that's ridiculous. And then he sends back to everybody, well, you're wrong and here's why you're wrong. Well, now we've got a meeting because we're doing it. And, you know, the problem is you don't control anything once you hit send. Certainly, but, but again, I mean, and, and all of this is theoretical. I mean, there's no case law on it in terms of what, you know, what judges are going to do. But I could certainly see some of the judges here in Washington County, for example, that would say, when you send the email to trustee Baum and then trustee Baum in turn forwards it on to, to two other people. And then now we've got all this discussion that, that, you know, at least one of the judges here, I think, would have no problem saying, you violated the open meetings law because you sent that out in the first place, even though that wasn't your intent. So I think you do need to be careful. And I think that, you know, unless it's something that is very, you know, complex or detailed, there really isn't any reason why you couldn't just at the meeting say, hey, this is what I think. Oh, we're going to talk about that in a second too. We'll get back to that one.
What you just said, um, is that that's why we have these public meetings. Do your homework, you know, and talk to neighbors or whoever is involved in the issue. But then we bring it here and you state your viewpoint and then we all have the discussion. This, as long as I've been involved with this village board, that's the way it's been done and it's been very effective. Sure, we sometimes have kind of long meetings because you don't know where the next guy's coming from, but that's the awesome part of it. We're doing it cleanly, publicly, in the way it should be done.
Right. Um, you know, and I mean, I think that, that, you know, I was actually just kind of recently reminded of this because we, we, we just talked about it a couple, uh, weeks ago with, with president Walter. I have recollection that when we shifted the, the, the way the dais was set up, you know, from, from, you know, kind of, Dean and Steve and I over here and the rest of you on that end to this kind of split concept. One of the reasons we did it, not necessarily the only reason, but one of the reasons we did it was that at the time we were having problems with a couple of trustees who are no longer with us, who were sitting next to each other and would sit at the meeting the whole time back and forth, uh, amongst themselves. That also is potentially a violation of the open meetings law because you are having discussions, maybe. I mean, nobody knows obviously because you're whispering, but to the extent that that discussion is you talking amongst yourselves of, hey, this is what I think should be going on or what I think. You've now kept from the public certain aspects of what your thought process is in terms of why you're making the decision that you're doing. Now, I've never seen that prosecuted. I've never seen a complaint on that particular issue. But it is something that us municipal lawyers think about all the time of, hey, you know, you're, you're violating the open meetings law because you're not giving the public the benefit of why it is you're voting the way you're doing. You're only talking to the guy next to you and then you say, oh, yep, aye. Um, you know, where, you know, clearly you had some thoughts because you were sharing it during the meeting. Where I think this becomes more of a concern sometimes. And I don't think I've seen it here, but I have in other bodies. Um, is, you know, most of us now have laptops or phones, you know, in front of us. You know, likewise, you can't be sending text messages or emails back and forth among members of the body while you're at the meeting. Again, the idea is you're at the meeting in public to help the public understand why it is you're making the decision you're making. If you're doing that in email form, you're not doing the public meeting as trustee Kaminsky says, the right way. Um, so just to kind of get back to, uh, the electronic communications, uh, in short, if it looks like a, a, a meeting, then the courts are likely going to find it to be. So the number of participants in the communication, the number of communications, if it's just one that goes out versus 16 that go back and forth, that's going to make a difference. The timeframe which, in which they occurred, if you send one out and then a week and a half later, you get a response versus, you know, back and forth. Um, you know, those types of concerns, whether it looks like a conversation or not. Um, attending other meetings, um, there, the, you know, you'll see at the bottom of, of some of our agendas from time to time, this little notice that says, notice is hereby given that, you know, a quorum of the plan commission or whatever may be present at a particular meeting for the purposes of gathering information for which they may take action on in the future, even though they're not going to take action that night. That language comes directly from the bad key, uh, case that cited. The bottom line on attending other meetings, if you are going to go to a meeting that is not one of your regular meetings. So if you are going to go, for example, on plan commission and you're not a plan commission member, just let Deanna know that you're going to be at plan commission so that if we find out that we're going to have a quorum of the village board at plan commission on something that we're going to talk about, then we can make sure we send out this bad key notice. Again, as we talked about with, with, with president Walter's question, it gives the public the knowledge that, hey, something is going on, you may want to pay attention to it, even though we're not necessarily taking action on it that night. So if you provide us, you know, if, if you give Deanna the notice that you're going to be there, if we've got enough, she can send out the notice and now we don't have any open meetings violations. If you find out you're in that circumstance, you show up to plan commission and there isn't a bad key notice at the bottom of the agenda that says, hey, the village board may be there. And you find out that you've got a quorum or more that's present at that meeting. Just do the right thing and just walk out. It'll be easier for everybody. No. And the, and the reason for that, and, and some communities do, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to, you know, sugarcoat it. Um, I think putting it on the bottom of every notice doesn't do, it doesn't notify the public of anything at that point. Because if you just say, well, members could be at any meeting, who knows, you just need to pay attention. It doesn't highlight to the public the fact that, hey, this might be important. Like, hey, this isn't normal. I should pay attention because clearly the village board thinks it's important enough that they're going to go to this meeting. I, I don't know, is the answer. I, I personally think that we can't because I think if that was ever challenged in court, and it hasn't been. If that practice was ever challenged though, I think the courts come down on the side that says, if you are putting the notice on every agenda, you're not notifying the public of anything. All you're doing is just trying to cover your rear end. If we had a quorum at every single meeting, then yeah. But, but at that point then it's, no, I mean, it's, it's a good question. Um, but at that point, it's because we have, you know, that, that, that you find it important enough to go to the meetings. And so we should notify the public that it's important that they should maybe look at what's going on at the meeting. So that's number one. Number two, it doesn't necessarily apply to subcommittees of the full, of this body. So there are standing committees, you know, so public safety, for example. At public safety, you have a quorum or, or almost a quorum of the village board at every meeting. And, you know, we're not going to put a bad key notice on every one of those because that's just the membership of the body. It's, it's going to happen. And so, um, you know, you wouldn't necessarily do that on something where it would be expected. Again, the idea is, is that you're highlighting to the public something that maybe they should have some interest in. Um, so going back to our red notes, um, one of the other ones was public notice. Um, statute just says that we have to have notice of, of the meeting. That sets forth the time, date, place and subject matter of the meeting, uh, and, uh, what it's, what's going to be talked about. Um, the statute, the key language is, is that it needs to be reasonably likely to apprise the members of the public and news media of what's going to be taking place. And so, um, we can skip this slide. In essence, this is, uh, a slide that actually I use, um, when I do this presentation for, you know, clerks and staff member who, who do, uh, agendas, but I like it anyway, because I think it helps explain to you what you should look for. Not so much with village agendas, because we tried to do it right here. But if you are on those other bodies and wondering, hey, what's going on? These are good practices for you to look at the agenda to make sure that you're not getting in trouble on that particular body. So I, I include it here just for that. So when it comes to notice, your best practice is number one, you're going to want to go back to grade school. You're going to answer your five Ws, your members of your five Ws. There you go. So that's what you're going to want to, want to be able to answer. Who, where, what, when, why? Uh, so which body is meeting? Where is it located? The date and time of the meeting? What are we going to be talking about? And okay, maybe we won't answer why, because that's kind of hard to do on an agenda. But, um, you know, to the extent that you can pick up an agenda and say, oh, I know where they're meeting. I know what they're going to be talking about. You've got a good agenda. If the, if the meeting, um, and here's our don't category. Um, if you, if you don't know what's going on, because you pick up the agenda, then it's not a good agenda. So for example, we wouldn't just say, we're going to rezone the property at 123 Elm Street. Doesn't, I mean, it tells me we're going to rezone the property, but not much beyond that. A better agenda would be, we're going to rezone the property at 123 Elm Street from R1 to B2. That tells the public, oh, there's something interesting going on here. Or, oh, business zoning, I don't want that next to me. Maybe I should pay attention to that. Um, you know, likewise, we don't say we approve a contract. Instead of say, we're going to approve a contract with ABC corporation in the amount of, you know, $16,000 for the purposes of paving the road or whatever. That tells the public what it is we're doing.
Does it have to include all items where it shows action item or not?
That's my last one.
Sorry.
You guys, you guys are good. You're, you're a step ahead of me all the way through this. That's good. Um, I personally have, uh, am of the opinion that you don't need all of that kind of fancy stuff. So you don't need to say, you know, approval of cons, you know, contract or consideration of contract or, you know, discussion uh, or anything like that, um, because arguably potentially limit yourself. So what I mean by that is, is let's just say that you put discussion of, and then you get to the end of the discussion and you want to take action on the item that you just discussed. Well, there are some people that would say, because you highlighted it as just discussion, we're not going to be able to take action because it was just going to be discussion. And so my personal belief is, is that we don't put those types of things on there. We just say contract in, you know, in the amount of $16,000 for this purpose, because that tells the public, hey, we're going to be talking and maybe doing something with that contract. If we limit it, then we create potential issues. Now, there may be circumstances where it makes sense for us to do that. You know, if we know, for example, there is a particularly contentious development coming forward and we know we're not going to be taking action on something and it's just a discussion item, we may put on there discussion to highlight the fact that this is only going to be a discussion, that we're not going to be taking action on it. Um, and again, by then changing it up, it highlights for members of the public, oh, this is something different. And they pay more attention to it at that point.
A little guidance here. I've been in committee meetings where all of a sudden we're off topic and we start talking about something peripheral to the actual item that's on the agenda. And I have to stop discussion on that because you should not have substantial discussion about something like that. But, um, let's say, for example, somebody comes up to the podium in, uh, and starts offering some information about how they don't like the way their road was repaired. Nothing on the agenda about that, say at a public works committee meeting. We can respond, say thank you for coming, but how far can we take that response and discussion?
Um, so the, the, your, your best practice there is truly to just say, thank you for coming. Um, you know, we'll pass on your. Um, so the, the, your, your best practice there is truly to just say, thank you for coming, um, you know, we'll pass on your information to, to, you know, to those that are appropriate. Or, you know, we, we, we'll look to maybe bring that forward as a future agenda topic or something like that. Um, you know, you, you, you really shouldn't be providing. You know, answers or taking any, you know, significant a, action on any of that, now sometimes. You know, I mean, it's going to happen, you know, you're, you're going to get the guy that's going to say. You know, I'm really angry that my garbage doesn't get picked up on Tuesdays because, you know, that upsets me and, you know, they miss it every week and they don't pick it up until Wednesday. And the answer is, well, you know, your garbage gets picked up on Wednesdays. And, you know, it's just easier to just say, uh, y- your garbage gets picked up on Wednesdays, you know, than to say, oh, well, we'll get back to you on it, you know, so I mean. It's going to happen, you know, and that's the reality, but the, the, the more you can get into the practice of just saying. Thank you for the information, you know, we'll, we'll bring that forward, you know, the better off you are. So closed sessions, uh, in. Uh, open, uh, in, in open meetings context, um. The, the kind of key takeaways here, uh, are that you need to, as part of the process. Identify in the motion, um, which is why we put the language right on the agenda for you. You know, what basis are you going into closed session for? So, hey, we're going to go into closed session for the purposes of, you know, conferring with legal counsel to talk about the lawsuit that was just filed. There's no lawsuit that was just filed, uh, just an example, uh, that, or at least not that I'm aware of. You know. So you need to highlight for the public as part of both the agenda. And then the motion that that's why you're going into closed session. Likewise, uh, it needs to be a roll call vote, we do a very good job of that here, um, I don't know that, uh, you know, unless, you know, somebody just forgets, usually, you know, somebody says, hey, roll call. Um, you know, there are some communities that forget every month. You know, it's just kind of frustrating, but, uh, i- it is what it is, but the, the roll call is the, uh, important part, uh, of that process. A couple additional points on closed sessions, um, number one. Your closed session has to be limited to the purpose of that closed session. Even though there may be things that are related to it that you want to talk about. So the best example that, uh, I could maybe give to you for that would be. You know, if we're going to go in to talk about, you know, a personnel issue. You know, the statute allows you to go in to talk about personnel issues, you know, for the purposes of, you know, preventing embarrassment, for example, you're going to talk about a sensitive topic. You can go in to talk about the sensitive topic, but you shouldn't necessarily then talk about. All of the other things that you need to do with respect to that, so you know, we're going to give them a raise and so. Um, you know, you know, the, the, the raise part should probably be in open sessions that have closed because. You're limited to just that very specific thing, again, the policy is, is that the people get the most information they potentially can. Really is not, you know, as I say, it's not a concern here, I think we generally do it well, um, the only other thing that, that. You know, I've over the years tried to do and we kind of slipped back and forth between it and. At the end of the day, I don't make too much of us think about it just because it's kind of how everybody does it. I think. Technically, under the open meetings law, if we are going to have multiple closed sessions, you know, we're going to talk about a lawsuit and then we're going to talk about employment and then we're going to approve some. Um, negotiation strategy, that we should have three separate motions. And then three separate votes, um, on that. And we do that, I think, most of the time, um, since, since I've been here, um, but we do occasionally just kind of do the, the single vote altogether. The only thing that I will tell you on those and just remind you of, um, and, and particular for you new folks. Uh, is that if you ever find yourself in a point where we take a vote on. We've got three closed sessions, we're going to do a vote on all three, three, and you're not comfortable voting. Yes, to go into closed session on one of the items because you don't think it should be in closed session. You have the right under Roberts rules to split that question. And force a vote on the, on the, on each one individually. And the reason that we do that is because if you vote no, and you say, no, we should not be going into closed session for this matter. You can still go into closed session because you're a member of the body, but you will be the only one that the DA doesn't call when it's a violation of the open meetings law. Because you were the one who said, no, this isn't right, we shouldn't be doing that and so. Sometimes it makes sense to split that question when we do combine them and so just always remember that, that you always have that ability to split those questions.
Statement, correct me if I'm wrong, when taking roll call, the proper response is yes or no, not here. Sorry. Yes?
That's, that's, that's one of those weird quirks of Roberts rules, which is to say that, yes, you're probably right, that yes or no is the right one. Um, but, uh, you know, technically a here vote would be a different vote altogether, um, on most things, although. Generally, a here vote is just considered to be, you're voting with the affirmative. Um, but, uh, yes, it should be a yes or no, uh, votes, but. It, um, depending on the circumstances, it, it gets applied differently, so. So the reasons for going to closed session, um, I think that, that by and large, most of you have seen, probably, yeah, at least some of these, our new folks necessarily haven't. Uh, but the ones that we most typically see, if we're going to deal with, uh, you know, deliberating some, you know, judicial type hearing that we have, uh, so for example, if we had a. Alcohol license revocation hearing, we could go potentially in the closed session for the purposes of discussing that. Um, you know, deliberation after the hearing, again, not frequently used, but it's one of the ones that we have used. Uh, considering dismissal, demotion, licensing or discipline of a, a public employee or licensee, so. Um, kind of the same thing, if we were going to fire a, a public employee, we could go into closed session to talk about why we're going to fire them. Um, just let it wasn't, uh, public. Considering employment promotion compensation, uh, again, same thing, um, there. Uh, financial, medical, social personnel histories, again, the idea being, we don't want to discuss some things that are personal in nature in public. Purpose of, uh, conferring with legal counsel on, uh, litigation, it's another one. Ethics bu- uh, bodies, we've never used that here, um, but, uh, it is one that gets frequently used with, with local governments from time to time. Uh, and then the probably most common one for us is the deliberating and negotiating the purchase of public properties. The key with really that last one, uh, and really any of them. Is that you can't go into the closed session solely for the purposes of avoiding negative, uh, public discussion. Um, we can't go into closed session because it might eliminate potential competition, so, you know, the developer comes to us and says, hey, you really got to keep this quiet because if we let it out, then. You know, the property owner that we're looking at is going to, you know, want more money from us because we're Amazon or, you know, whatever. Um, it's not a valid reason to go into closed session, uh, in and of itself. Um, so best practices, again, this i- is really designed more for the, the staff, uh, type of level. But I think it's something that you can keep in the back of your mind as you're looking at agendas, um, either our own or those other bodies. Make sure you're including the statutory language on the agenda, um, you know, what's being discussed, this particular exemption that you're talking about. Um, and then if you're going to go back into open session, you need to put that on the agenda as well. Um, and don't skimp on the details, you know, sometimes, especially with closed session stuff, there's this tendency to just say, oh, well, we're going to approve a contract, you know. Again, you know, citizen needs to be able to tell what's being discussed, even though it may potentially tip a hat a little bit or. Um, you know, disclose maybe, you know, something that, that somebody doesn't want to know. Um, you know, the, the citizens should still be able to figure out what it is that we're talking about. And then we talked about the separate votes, um, you know, just remember you can split the, uh, the, the, the vote if you need to. So, um, th- this, uh, you know, again, is, is really more designed for staff, but it's kind of an interesting discussion. Um, you know, you consider the option, uh, the optics of things, you know, if you highlight, uh, you know, in a separate part of the agenda, oh, here's our closed sessions. Um, you know, versus just including it in line with the new business, um, you know, sometimes that has a, a, an impact. If you keep it with part of the just regular agenda, um, you know, folks tend to look at that as, oh, that's just business as usual, um, and so if you had something that was highly. You know, controversial with an employee, for example, you might want to just include it in line with the, the new business items. Um, you know, on the other hand, uh, if it was something that was, you know, kind of, you know, big picture, um, you know, in this case, we have the easement for the sanitary sewer main. Uh, which is the, uh, last item there, I don't know if everybody can read that, uh, up at, uh, Holy Hill. While that was in line with the new business, it was at the end of the agenda and so it helps highlight for the members of the public that, oh. You know, here's something that might be interesting. So, um, open records law, a couple of real quick points, uh, on this particular, uh, uh, topic. Um, number one, again, we have a question or you just. No worries, um, so again, uh, statute identifies for us a public policy, that public policy, not surprising, is kind of the same. Uh, that we like giving the public as much information as we potentially can give them. Legal custodians, uh, in short, each of you is a legal custodian of your own records, so to the extent that you have emails or, you know, files that you keep at home. You are the custodian of those records, clerk's office is going to help you, you know, if we get an open records request to identify, hey, we've got the request, here's what we're looking for. Um, you know, and, and help you to the extent that we can, but at the end of the day, you are the responsible party for the, for your own records. Just to give you an idea of what happens when we get a request, because I think sometimes folks just think that, oh, well, you just give it to them automatically and, you know, you, there's no a- analysis or anything. It's not true, uh, there, there's a step, uh, four step process that we go through every time we get in a records request. Step one, we identify, is there a record that exists at all? If there's no record that exists, the response is easy, nothing exists, end of response. If there is a record that is identified, then we look at that record and we try to determine whether or not the requester is entitled to access by law. Um, there's very few of those instances, uh, in most cases, it's an employee asking for their employment record. Um, they have a pretty carte blanche ability to get a copy of that for themselves. Assuming that they're not entitled, we do the flip side, we look at it and try to determine whether or not there's any law that absolutely prohibits us from giving that record away. The most common example of that is actually in the police department, there is a law that prohibits us from providing any information that we get from. A driver's license or from DMV data and so. If the request comes in and says, hey, I'd like a copy of that person's driver's license. Um, you know, we would say no, because it's exempt from, from disclosure by, by statute. If it's not in any of those categories, then we conduct the fourth step, which is just the balancing test. That balancing test in short tells us, um, you know, we kind of weigh. The public's interest in that particular record versus whatever our interests, if there is any, um, to keeping that record confidential. And you kind of balance it out and try to determine which one is more important. And then you provide your reasons and hope that they buy that excuse and don't sue you because you should have turned it over anyway. So, uh, that's kind of the, the response process, uh, you know, real quick and short. Record, um, i- is pretty simple, anything that you have by and large is a record. Uh, the only thing that, that you probably in a, in regular use have. Um, that isn't a record is your own personal notes, so if you're taking notes tonight. Um, on some particular item or you're talking to a, a, you know, citizen and you're taking notes on what they talked about. As long as the note is for your own personal recollection down the road, that note is not a record. Otherwise, it's probably a record, your text messages, that's a record, your Facebook posts, that's a record, your. Um, you know, your Twitter, you know, rants, um, you know, that's a record, you signed a letter to somebody, that's a record. Um, you know, pretty much anything that you can think of that's a physical, um, you know, documents or material. Um, you know, is, is ultimately probably a record. Uh, yes, and in fact, um, we're going to talk, you know, again, you're, you're in front of me, uh, a slide or two. Um, but yes, um, in short, my recommendation is, is to the extent that you can, you are always better off separating. Your lives, um, whether it's Facebook posts or Twitter posts or email addresses or, or whatever the case may be. So, uh, we talk a little bit about drafts. In short, a draft is a document that's i- an internal document, so if, if we're exchanging it amongst all of us for the purposes of trying to figure out, okay, is this good, are we moving forward? That's a draft, the second we take what is otherwise marked a draft because it's not the final version and we take that and we hand it over to the developers council because it's their turn to look at it. That no longer is a draft under the statute, it may still be a draft in the sense that it's not finished. But for open records purposes, that is a public document because it's not for our own internal use, it's for, uh, use that's outside. Um, so here's, uh, the, uh, slide that, uh, I just, did you have a question?
I was going to s- uh, say, basically speaking, when a person wants a request for information. It needs to be not open ended, it needs to be. Drawn into a particular subject matter, not that, give me all your emails that you've had for the last year. Uh, for no particular reason, it needs to be in, in a particular scope, is that correct?
In short, yes, I mean, uh, you know, certainly one of the, you know, this, the, the four step process that we talk about, I mean. One of the things we do as part of that analysis is try to determine whether this is a reasonable request at all and so. If the request was, you know, give me sixteen years worth of email. Um. You know, y- you're not being reasonable in terms of time and scope, uh, as to, as to what we're looking at. You know, on the other hand, if they say, you know, give me all of the emails for the last month and a half. Um, you know, that, that may be a little bit different, uh, in terms of, of what's going on. Uh, you know, likewise, you know, saying, give me all of the documents that say, um, you know, uh, you know, Rick Miller in it. Um, y- you know, without a time limitation, you know, that, that could be, you know, you know, the, the, the search effort there is, is probably going to be unreasonable, so certainly that is part of the analysis is. You know, is this a, a fair and legitimate question or, or request or is it, or what we call overbroad? So it's, it's definitely part of the consideration. Um, so, uh, the slide that we were just talking about to answer President Walters', uh, question, um, effectively, uh, the shield case out of Wisconsin Rapids. Uh, came down and, uh, it really makes it pretty clear that if you have a personal device. But you have government emails and documents on it, that means that. Your personal device is potentially subject to, uh, open records, um, analysis. And what I mean by that is that if you have your own personal device. And somebody makes a records request and says, please, you know, give me all of the, you know, emails that you have about X, Y, well, emails is a bad example because we'll just pull that off the server. But give me all of the. You know, documents that you might have, electronic documents that you might have. And you turn over three documents and they say, well, that's not all the documents. You know, it's all the documents and then they sue you because they say that's not all the documents. If they're able to convince the judge that they know you're withholding documents and so we should analyze their computer. In, in, in to find additional documents that they might be hiding because. We know that they are doing it typically because they have a copy of something that, that you have too. You know, the court can say, okay, well, we're going to do an analysis of that computer, we're going to do a forensic analysis and we're going to go through and we're going to search all the documents and we're going to see. You know, the, the, you know, the analyst will be sworn to confidentiality and, and only the analyst will look at it and all that stuff, but you're still going to have some third party that's going through all of your documents. And saying, yep, 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 nope, yep, and, you know, s- separating it into what is and isn't responsive to the particular request. So with that in mind, um, you know, that's where the, 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 the recommendation comes from. Um, it is a lot easier to keep all of that separate to the extent that you can, now. For you folks, it's easy because you. for you folks, it's easy because you get your email address that's sent. You know, all of your communications are to, and so you should be using that, um, because it helps, you know, keep that separation. And devices a little bit harder, you know, I think most of you probably use your personal device, either, you know, here tonight, you might have one uh, with you, or certainly your cell phone, you know, it's probably your own device that you're, you know, texting with people on or whatever. Um, you know, but I think you just need to be mindful of the fact that, that that could happen. Even though I say it can happen, it's very rare. It's not realistically ever going to happen. Um, but it's just one of those extra steps that you can do to just try to per, you know, protect yourself as best you can, is to, to try to keep those worlds separate. The other place where that then helps is when you're dealing with campaign stuff. You know, we'll get emails, for example, that, hey, give me President Walter's email list for all of his, you know, contacts. Well, there's a difference between President Walter's campaign world, his personal world and his business world. And so if he's kept that separate, we can say, well, here's his, you know, here's his village, you know, email list and you know, it might have four people on it, but it won't necessarily be his campaign email list, which has, you know, 1,600 people on it. Um, and so to the extent that you can keep them separate, you end up, you know, kind of protecting yourself in all sorts of different ways. Um, we already talked about this a little bit, um, all of those social media stuff, Twitter, Facebook, text messages, all of that are all records. The key concern is preservation. Um, and so what you ideally should be doing if uh, you aren't already, is figuring out a way to try to preserve those communications and records that you have. Um, what that probably means in most cases is taking a screenshot, you know, you get, uh, you know, you post something on Facebook, take a screenshot of the post and then store it somewhere so that you can say that you have it. Um, the reason why you do that is because while we don't think Facebook is going away anytime soon, you never know. And it could be, you know, tomorrow that all of a sudden their servers got nuked and all of your records are now gone. And you didn't preserve those records appropriately, which potentially subjects you to um, potential liability. Again, is it likely? Maybe not, but potential. Um, confidentiality agreements, that's really more uh, staff related, trustee minds.
Redacting, when does that come into play?
Um, so, uh, you know, we would redact anything, uh, and have a responsibility to redact anything. So if you've got a record that otherwise is public, but it's got, you know, say a social security number on it, for example, we have a responsibility to redact that personal information that shouldn't be out, but the record itself would be, uh, you know, the, the, the fact that a piece of information is on a record doesn't make the full record, um, exempt. We, we release the record, we just redact the pieces that we can't.
What is it, you know, that's, to me, it seems like a wide area in regard to what gets redacted and what does not.
Um, not really. It's the same analysis that when we do the, you know, are you entitled or not entitled to the record? It's the same kind of analysis. You know, we look at the law and we say, what is and isn't things that the law protects? So if it's a social security number, oh, the law protects that, we cross it out. If it's, you know, a police department record and it's a DMV record, um, or something we obtained from the DMV, oh, well, that's, you know, that's something that's protected by statute. So we redact that information out, you get the rest of the report. Um, it's not really any different than, than that initial analysis.
Okay.
I, I mean, Deanna, you disagree, I mean, it's, it's fairly straightforward, I think.
The other pieces, you can't charge for it.
Right, I mean, that's, that's, that's more of a us side, um, staff side, but you know, we can't charge to redact by statute. Um, which, you know, on a big request can be a pain, you know, if, you know, you get the all of the requests for all of the reports related to the protests, for example, last summer. And you're going through and redacting, you know, 1,600 pages worth of documents from all the information, it's going to be time consuming. We don't get to charge for that. Um, by statute, so it, you know, I mean, it, it hurts, it stings a little bit, but um, the, the, the process is not difficult. It's, it's pretty straightforward. Alright, um, so I think we're down to the last slide or two, as I recall. Um, this is really just a highlight for you folks as elected officials, just be aware, um, not that, that you need to worry. But uh, certainly it's, it's something that you may want to pass on to folks that, um, you know, correspondence with you uh, is certainly a public record and is not redactable in any way. So if you get an email from somebody and uh, you know, it's their personal, you know, private email, you know, unless we have some basis to know that, you know, it's a, uh, you know, a victim of, uh, you know, harassment or something and there's a restraining order, um, you know, we would turn that record over without any redaction. They're going to have their email address, their phone number, their address, their name, uh, all of that will get released. Um, that's just part of the expectation when you're communicating with government. Um, and uh, the last slide, um, if you have any additional questions, um, you can do a couple of things. You can and probably should just call me. We'll talk about it. That's the easiest way, um, or email me. Um, if uh, you're just, you know, that much of a nerd, um, and really want to get into the details. Um, you know, I'm thinking about my future law student here, uh, for example, the attorney general's office on their webpage, they have an office of open government. Um, under that section of their webpage, they have two manuals. They have an open meetings compliance guide and an open, and a public records compliance guide. Um, those two documents are typically the first place I turn to after the statute when I have something that I'm not sure of, you know, or if it's something that's a new question for me. Um, you know, you read the statute typically first, so you understand what the statute says, and then you go here to see what the attorney general's office says. So both are, are good guidelines that are available to the public, anybody can look at it, um, and certainly, um, you know, would encourage you to, to do that if, if you're so inclined, but it may, as I say, just be easier to call me, so. With that, um, you guys, you know, I've done this presentation, I don't know how many times over the years and I think this is the most questions I've ever gotten going through it, so, um, that's, that's awesome. Took longer than we were expecting as a result, but that, that's good.
I'm going to ask one more and it's a little out of this scope, but public hearings. So once in a while, so Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, I'm, I don't sit on either one of those, obviously, and if I want to speak at a public hearing, uh, I've always followed predecessors by saying, I'm not here on behalf of, on, as a trustee, I'm here as a private citizen. Is that the proper protocol for something like that?
Um, so the, that question really is not necessarily an open meetings or an open records, uh, issue that really uh, typically falls more under an ethics category. Um, and uh, you know, what I can tell you is th- there's kind of two pieces of analysis there. There's the, the, what I think is the easier one, which is you as a trustee cannot use your position as trustee in any way that would curry some favor for something. And so, you know, if you go to a meeting and you want to say, hey, I'm really in favor of this, um, you know, certainly one way that you can try to minimize that impact of, hey, that's a trustee, he must be important, is to do just what you said. You know, I'm, I'm here, you know, I'm a trustee, but I'm not here because I'm a trustee, you know, I'm just a concerned citizen, or this is a friend of mine, or whatever the case is. I want you to know X. It's not going to necessarily protect you in every case, you know, because it's going to be a factual based analysis of, you know, hey, what's really going on here? Um, but it's, it's, you know, kind of the bare minimum that you can do. The other thing that you do see from time to time, um, and, and it's been a while since I've seen it personally. Um, but you'll get the trustee who wants to speak on behalf of the full body. So they'll come into the plan commission and say, well, I'm a trustee and I want you to know that this is wrong. You know, I never identify that it's their own personal opinion or anything like that. Um, you know, you're now speaking potentially on behalf of the full body. And you know, if, if you're, you know, utilizing that, you know, excessively or inappropriately, that really then opens yourself up to potential censure and removal from the, from the village board, um, if it, if it was bad enough. Um, you know, that, that you are speaking, you know, as if we all are in agreement and we're not in agreement. Or, you know, probably more typically, the example is, is where you've taken some formal action. You know, we're going to say, yes, we're going to approve it, and then you appear at some other meeting and say, well, I'm a trustee and, you know, the village, you know, and, and you know, as a trustee, we think this is wrong, you know, to give the impression that the village board doesn't agree. That's, that's probably a little bit more typical, buddy.
I was going to say, a lot of times at the plan commission meeting, uh, uh, as, as a president coming out to uh, uh, make a statement, uh, the president is, is always asking, are you coming up as a citizen or as a trustee? So he always lets you know ahead of time, so.
Right. And I, and I mean, uh, uh, don't get me wrong, I mean, there are circumstances where it may be appropriate for you as a trustee to be doing that, so. Uh, you know, an example would be you're going to go to the plan commission. And it's not that you necessarily, you know, that, that, you know, it's, it's a, you know, subdivision in your district, but it's not your subdivision, so you have no personal stake there. Um, you know, it may be that you come to the plan commission because you've gotten 16 emails from the, you know, 16 neighbors to whatever project. And you want to come in and say, look, as a trustee, I just want you to know that the 16 neighbors are really upset about this, or you know, really like this, you know, depending on the circumstance, you know, that you are utilizing your position just to, to, to pass on the information that you've gained, you know, in your position. Where it becomes wrong is where you have a personal stake. So if it's, you know, your own development or your own potential, you know, it's going to impact your house, you know, specifically as opposed to other people. Um, you know, it's your brother-in-law or your, you know, your brother, you know, who's going to gain from an approval, you know, those types of concerns that create problems. Um, I mean, in, in a way, yes, um, you know, the, the, you know, the, what, what ends up happening in those circumstances is, you know, you know, and again, I mean, it's, it's, it's very unusual for it to actually happen. I mean, it's a pretty high burden to be able to say to, you know, have a court say to a private citizen, oh, we need to look at your computer to, to try to determine. Um, usually it's based on, you know, significant evidence of, you know, you know, deception and fraud, you know, that, that, you know, oh, here's, you know, 35 documents that clearly are responsive that you didn't provide, um, you know, those types of things. So I mean, it's, it's probably fairly unusual, but I would say in general, yes, that, that if you're keeping, you know, like, you know, your emails are, you know, on the server, you know, in the cloud, um, so to speak. Um, you know, we would typically do the search through the cloud to identify that. And so, you know, we're not necessarily going to go to your personal computer. And likewise, it may be that when they say, you know, it's, you know, to you, hey, you know, we think you're, you know, hiding documents, you can say, well, I upload everything to the cloud, that would be where you want to look. And unless they can establish some reason why they think there might be something on the computer too, um, you know, that may be all they look at is that cloud storage, so. Yep. Yep, not a, not a, not an open meetings issue or open records issue per se, but uh, definitely good, good advice that, that you want to keep those separate because you, you can run afoul of, of different laws. Laws with more teeth, by the way.
Yeah. Alright, anything else? Any other questions? Thank you, Brian. Alright, that takes care of all items on tonight's agenda and under new business. Uh, before we adjourn, the next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, May 3rd at 7:00 PM here at the village hall boardroom and also accessed via WebX. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching and have a good night. We are adjourned.
Yes, ma'am.